You can hear me, but I can not get any feedback. Right?
I'm still literally sorry.
Right.
Nice to have you here.
We can see Theodore Roberts in fact.
Oh, okay, is that?
Which I think is, hold on. Oh, that's pretty sweet.
Those are unique things to go to. Everybody's like, hey, they conference.
Oh, yeah, I've never been to one.
That's unique.
Nothing. I know what it's like.
There was one years ago, we went out there and had a lunch at the office. He just happened.
And he was wearing all.
Just happened to show.
Mario Brothers. No. We went home for a while. And you, yeah, and you, a lot of times. You're all looking at each other like. So, you know about Andrew Lott, Andrew? You know, this Mark is what? Yeah, Mark said.
Right there. Mark sitting by the fire, he's got his feet up. Smoky jagged, it's like. Which you shouldn't be able to hear.
I have coffee anyway.
Yeah, I haven't heard a lot like that.
All right, ready? Mr. Roberts. You know, ready?
And she having the fire, because the fire department's happening. A whole group of people.
Okay, so. I want to welcome everyone to the July 12 Portsmouth Town Council meeting. Council President Agiar cannot attend. I will be chairing tonight, I'm Linda Yabuzo, Vice President. And before we begin, we'll just take care of some House TV items. First, we are still in hybrid mode. And so there are people who are wanting to participate, who are not in this building. And so if you are participating remotely by phone, please press star nine to raise your hand and ask for question. And after you've been called, please press star six to unmute and mute yourself. If you are participating on Zoom, click on the hand icon to raise your hand or drop your question into the chat box. And then after you've been called, please click on the microphone icon to unmute and mute yourself. In the event of an emergency, you may exit the chambers through one of the two side doors or the door behind me. And we should exit the building and meet in the monkey rock outside of this school committee room. And have I left anything out that? Okay, then let us stand for the Fledge of Allegiance and promote silence for men and women who are in hearts.
The allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, may we please take the roll. Ms. Yabuzo? President. Ms. Abbott?
Present.
Dr. Meyer?
Here.
Mr. Hamilton?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Dr. Ryan?
Here.
And Mr. Aguirre is not present. Okay, we do have a form. And I have the next item on the agenda is the President's Executive Summary. And we do not have a report today, so we will move on to the presentations and recognition. Representative Carrie Corbett, this is her 72.
Good, Madam President, so I just wanted to take an opportunity, I think you as a town council may have already recognized some of the members of the Portsmouth Med Pod. But I wanted to take the opportunity to do so as well on behalf of the House of Representatives. And I did bring along some citations and I just wanted to thank these gentlemen here and volunteer coordinator Deb Kret for her help and for all your help and for really all the effort you put into the vaccination clinics. I think people came in and they felt comfortable, they felt safe at the beginning. I remember people were so excited, they had the opportunity. And we kept thinking that this is the last one and then the ages kept going down lower and lower. And you all were so flexible and so agreeable. And I just really wanted to thank you on behalf of the town and the state house for your efforts. And so with that, I do have a citation for each of you. For Chief Boar and for Rich Twitsley and Ray Perry for staying with your colleague, Deb Kret, for all your efforts. And I just wanted to thank you. And so I don't know what the appropriate thing is if we're just taking pictures or handing them out or. Thank you. Have a laugh if you want. Can we just hand, we can do that now because we're all vaccinated.
Thank you for the many hours you put in.
I can act as as the chair and also if you want one photo, I could just take one. You would like to stand there?
That'd be great.
Okay.
Oh, I'm probably.
Yeah. Oh, I thought you had up here.
It's a long way around now, all the chairs.
Okay, ready, one, two, three, gee. Okay, one, two, three, gee. Take a couple, someone's eyes are always closed, okay?
Thank you.
I'll email, I'll email. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all.
It was really inspiring working at the clinics, you guys did a great job. And you, Representative Corbett, thank you. Okay, the next item is our consent agenda. We have some bill vouchers, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve that.
Mark Ryan seconded.
He, he, okay, so we have a motion and a second. We think a roll call. Ms. Yabuzo?
I.
Ms. Abbott?
Here.
Amy?
I'm sorry, I.
Dr. Meyer?
I.
Mr. Hamilton?
I.
Mr. Kelly?
I.
Dr. Ryan?
I.
Okay, the vote is six to, is that right? Six to zero and the motion passes. Okay, we are now sitting as the Board of License Commissioners. The first one is a peddler license. Actually, the first place is called The Trap Box LLC, 70 Devonshire Street, Providence, one vehicle.
Second.
We have a motion and second, all in favor. Ms. Yabuzo?
I.
Ms. Abbott?
I.
Dr. Meyer?
I.
Mr. Hamilton?
I.
Mr. Kelly?
I.
Dr. Ryan?
I.
The vote is six to zero, that peddler's license pass. The next, the next business is the Incredible Food Company, DVA Incredible, 211 Vermont Avenue, Providence, one vehicle.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor. Ms. Yabuzo?
I.
Ms. Abbott?
I.
Dr. Meyer?
I.
Mr. Hamilton?
I.
Mr. Kelly?
I.
Dr. Ryan?
I.
Motion passes six to zero, the next business is Sarah McMillan, DVA Max Screaming Corn and Tacos, 2 Palmer Street, Barrington.
Move to approve.
We have a motion and second, all in favor. Ms. Yabuzo?
I.
Ms. Abbott?
I.
Dr. Meyer?
I.
Mr. Hamilton?
I.
Mr. Kelly?
I.
Dr. Ryan?
I.
Motion passes six to zero, the next is a peddler's license, the Calvert Collection, the O Box 314, Haverford, Pennsylvania.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and second, all in favor. Ms. Yabuzo?
I.
Ms. Abbott?
I.
Dr. Meyer?
I.
Mr. Hamilton?
I.
Mr. Kelly?
I.
Dr. Ryan?
I.
Motion passes six to zero.
Move to adjourn as the Board of License Commissioners.
Second.
We have a motion and second, all in. Ms. Yabuzo?
I.
Ms. Abbott?
I.
Dr. Meyer?
I.
Mr. Hamilton?
I.
Mr. Kelly?
I.
Dr. Ryan?
I.
Motion passes six to zero. Move on to minutes, we have four sets, the executive minutes from 5:41 and then three of our meeting minutes from June 9, 14 and 28. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve is presented.
All right, okay, there's a motion and second to approve all minutes, all in favor. Ms. Yabuzo?
I.
Ms. Abbott?
I.
Dr. Meyer?
I.
Mr. Hamilton?
I.
Mr. Kelly?
I.
Dr. Ryan?
I.
Motion passes six to zero, we move on to the town administrators' report, Mr. Ray.
Good, Madam Chair. Council ladies and gentlemen. With respect to the master plan, the Horstley-Witten Group consultant team has begun work on the Portsmouth Parks and Recreation Master Plan project. A kickoff meeting was held with staff and the chair of the Parks and Recreation Committee earlier last month. At this point, they are developing a project website called Participation Plan and Coordinating Data Collection and Analysis. That will last through summer. The second phase will include public engagement through online surveys and public workshops. We expect that to be completed early August through early October. The goal is to have a master plan developed between November and January with a second public workshop during the week of December 6th, followed by a local hearing in February. With respect to Weaver Cove, a kickoff meeting with the redesign and improvement team of GZA was held at Weaver Cove Boat Ramp between GZA, Representatives of DEM and staff, June 30th. GZA is now collecting data and will continue onsite analysis work in advance of developing a proposed redesign of the boat ramp facility. Upon completion, the proposal will be presented to the council, after which we will be working with DEM to secure possible funding for a construction. And with respect to the American Rescue Plan, the town has received the first tranche of ARP money for municipalities. The second tranche will be received in the next federal fiscal year, which begins October 1st. Additionally, the town will also receive ARP funding designated for counties. We have received guidance for expenditure of some of the funds in line with what the council has approved in the adopted budget. We expect further guidance from the US Department of Treasury on what remaining money may be used for. And we will update the council when that is received, so as to your advice based on recommendations. Madam Chair, that concludes my report, I would like to add, however, I'm sorry. You did bring up hybrid meetings, I would just like to remind everybody that the governor's executive order has not been extended so far. And the bill that was being debated up on the Hill did not pass. So as far as we know, next meeting, second meeting in July will be the last hybrid meeting. What that means is that all councillors will be required to be present. Or a forum would need to be present here in the room, but they may not vote online as they do right now. So that will start in August, just so that people can plan for it.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. The next item is removals, resignations and appointments. Item one is the removal of Mr. Alzner.
Move to approve.
Motion and second, all in favor. Ms. Yabuzo?
I.
Ms. Abbott?
I.
Dr. Meyer?
I.
Mr. Hamilton?
I.
Mr. Kelly?
I.
Dr. Ryan?
I.
The motion passes six to zero, next is a resignation from Leon Blazinski from the Melville Park Committee.
Seconded.
We have a motion and second, all in favor. Ms. Yabuzo?
I.
Ms. Abbott?
I.
Dr. Meyer?
I.
Mr. Hamilton?
I.
Mr. Kelly?
I.
Dr. Ryan?
I.
The motion passes six to zero, next is an appointment of John Brady for reappointment to the Glenn Nanner Committee.
Move to approve with amazement.
We have a motion and second, all in favor. Ms. Yabuzo?
I.
Ms. Abbott?
I.
Dr. Meyer?
I.
Mr. Hamilton?
I.
Mr. Kelly?
I.
Dr. Ryan?
I.
Motion passes six to zero, moving on to older business, item one is FY 21 Town Contingency Carryover.
As Madam Chair, we're respecting council approval to transfer the unexpected fiscal year 21 contingency budget of approximately $201,022 to a special revenue fund, which we relate to town contingency that will be carried forward for use in FY 22, as you remember from the adopted budget, that money is going to be used to fund capital in the budget. But it's just an accounting requirement that we move it into that fund so it doesn't go into a fund balance, is the proper way to do it, brought up to this question.
Thank you, Mr. Ray, do we need a motion on this in all?
Yes.
Move to approve the carryover of $201,022 in the town contingency budget from fiscal year 21 to fiscal year 22.
Second for discussion. This is include the 5% paid into the 1213, that was already done, of course, by council.
All right, then, oh, Mr. Would you like to speak?
Thank you, Madam President, Larry Dis Morris, 50 Kristen De Court. Been a long while since I spoke in the council chambers. My understanding, what you said is this is going to be carried over into a special revenue fund. Is that the equivalent of what we already have on the long list of funds straight on the town record? In other words, money's outside of the general fund.
Um, I think I have a, no, no place you're wrong, defer to the.
Well, I'm not, I'm not challenging you, no more place, I'm just trying to understand.
So it's.
So this will be one of the town's funds.
But it all in the service and all into the financials and we just move it through and over.
What we've done in the past is that money was just because it was approved in the budget that way last year. It was moved over, but then I believe it was you that brought it up last year that we should have gotten a vote from the council.
Thank you, this will be a restricted time, exactly.
Correct.
Um, thank you. How much was extended, expanded from this one, I don't remember how much this thing was, it's a little bit more than 201.
Probably about 49, a little less than 30,000.
Thank you. I think the other question I have is, or is an answer, thank you very much.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor. Ms. Yabuzo?
I.
Ms. Abbott?
I.
Ms. Rudemeyer?
I.
Mr. Hamilton?
I.
Mr. Kelly?
I.
Dr. Ryan?
I.
Six to zeros, on to new business, request the town council consider making Portsmouth a Purple Heart Town. Again, Representative Corbett, and I believe we have a guest.
Yes, Madam Chairman.
Oh, yes, I, good evening, thank you again, Madam President. I'll introduce you to Matthew McCoy, who I recently had the opportunity to meet. And I'm hoping he will explain his program for Purple Heart Towns. I was surprised to hear that Portsmouth didn't already have this. But with our large number of retired military and active duty people in Portsmouth, I thought it was appropriate for you all to learn about this and consider it. So thank you, and nice to see you online, Matthew.
Thank you, can everyone hear me okay? All right, Madam President and members of the town council, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. So the Purple Heart Medal was established on August 7, 1782 during the Revolutionary War. And it's an award for members, it was an award for members of the Continental Army. Most of you probably know it as an award that's presented to members of the military who have received wounds during combat. So the Veterans of Foreign Wars Department of Rhode Island initiated an effort two years ago to ask the cities and towns of the state to declare themselves formally through a proclamation in each of the localities and municipalities as Purple Heart Cities and Towns, as appropriate. So we were able to get numerous cities and towns that were able to do that. And now we're working to continue that effort specifically with the aim of linking up Providence, East Providence, Warren, Bristol. You know, basically everything on the east side of the bay and establishing a extension of the Purple Heart Trail from up north across the bridges over to Route 2 headed south. So in this particular case, if Portsmouth were to become via proclamation a Purple Heart Town, you would be the first point on that Purple Heart Trail on the east coast or the eastern path of, of the state. So basically, August the 7th of 2021 is National Purple Heart Day. And we're hoping that the people that we're talking to will be able to get this proclamation in place by then so that then you can work with the veteran service organizations in your town to commemorate the service and sacrifice of the combat wounded veterans in, in this case in Portsmouth. Are there any questions?
Thank you so much, Mr. McCoy, I know that in the backup, there was a draft proclamation.
Right, so the, the first town, I, I am a resident in North Kingstown. And so North Kingstown was the first town in Rhode Island that designated as a Purple Heart Town. We provided a copy of a draft resolution to the North Kingstown Town Council. And Mr. Ralph Mullis, our town manager and the town council, basically signed that into action. And then the Veterans of Foreign Wars post in the town purchased the signs to be placed at the entrances to the town. And then subsequent to that, a gentleman who's the post commander of VFW Post 916 in Wakefield, his name's Tiger Patrick, you may have seen him on the news, worked an effort with the state legislature to get Route 4, Route 2 and Route 1 basically from Warwick down to Wake or to Westerly designated as the Purple Heart Trail, linking up the towns that designated themselves as Purple Heart Towns. And so that effort was successful. And if you were to drive down Route 4, Route 2, Route 1 now, you will see the Purple Heart Trail signs alongside the road. And we're hoping to do something similar on the east bay side of Rhode Island.
Thank you.
Motion to approve proclamation that Clark was a Purple Heart Town. Second, ladies and gentlemen.
We have a motion and second, all in favor. Ms. Yabuzo?
I.
Ms. Abbott?
I.
Dr. Meyer?
I.
Mr. Hamilton?
I.
Mr. Kelly?
I.
Dr. Ryan?
I.
Motion passes six to zero, we have the proclamation, it will be finalized. Meeting, thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much for your support, it's greatly appreciated. And congratulations on becoming a Purple Heart Town.
Thank you so much. All right, the next item of new business is building permit late filing fee, Mr. Frosty?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman, the Building Department has asked me to put for, put forward to you a recommendation to adopt a filing fee, essentially a penalty for beginning construction project that requires a building permit without obtaining one. And I am told that it is a problem, a serious problem here in the town of Portsmouth. And that, as you can see from the backup, adopting this late filing fee would bring us into alignment with the other two communities on Aquinic Island, Middletown and Newport, both have a $500 late filing fee, we have none at this point, and we would like to ask the council to adopt this, this fee.
Are there any questions? Actually, I do have a question. Is the purpose of this to stop people from building without a permit? Because it is, um, are there other penalties that accrue with just going or do they just get charged $500?
Well, the, there are certain activities that require a building permit and others do not. The ones that do have a permit fee, and this, this would be over and above the, the permit fee that, that, that a builder would need to acquire to, to, to do a job. So this, this would be, in a, in a perfect world, somebody would come up and get a building permit and pay the fee and then go about their work and it would be inspected at the end. And oftentimes what we have is builders who start working and we get complaints and so forth. And so this is, this is over and above the building permit fee. And it would be collected at the time that they come in to, even, even though they're late, it would be collected at the time they come in to get a build permit so that they continue their work.
This is a fee that's going to be passed on to the citizens through the builders or the citizens directly?
It's not really a fee, it's, it's essentially.
Fine, fine.
It's a fine to the builder and over the homeowner for not doing their, same thing if a homeowner or citizen was driving down the street speeding, they're negative. So maybe that house six years ago completely built and people moved in without a building permits. So I mean, I would be, I like the way work has set up and five hundred person thousand percent. Yeah, well. I.
Yeah, regulation that isn't enforced is meaningless.
Coming out of COVID, out of the COVID pandemic. You know, the online portal, we had a. you know, the online portal, we had a building permit, it was horrible. It was very difficult. I had known my grandfather do it. So I just don't want to start penalizing people right out of the gate as we're coming out of this. I understand that, you know, we have to enforce our policies, but we can also bring them to municipal court for violating or building without a permit, probably.
I would only venture to say in respect to the council, it hasn't worked. The portal does work, and I would also say the town hall wasn't closed towards the lock, but builders had no problem getting in the town hall, we just had to call it dead. It hasn't worked, and you are all party to the regular plethora of emails that we're getting because there is work, there's a lot of work going on enforcement that has not confirmed it. And we're trying to put some teeth into it. And bringing people to municipal court has just, quite frankly, has not worked. And do you want to? We're, we're trying to bring our town in line with the other towns in Rhode Island that are trying to enforce a standard that should be met with an eye to where to say, we're not trying to punish people, but there is a reason that we have these quotes on the books, and there is a reason why the building inspector does need to be aware of the projects that are going on in town. And it does, it serves no good when we're, when we find out late, there's a restaurant in town that just proceeded with work with no inspection. We found out about it, and now that entire project is, is slowed down or maybe even signing because they didn't follow the rules. And now it's going to cost a lot more than 500 dollars, but we need to put some teeth in. Find us. The suggestion you did put forward does not work within the last six years.
I'd be more comfortable with a fee, a fine scale, like versus than I would be with a flat 500. It will be 150 for the first offense, 300 for the second, 500.
It has to be something that is penal. 150 bucks on a $600,000 house is coming. Well, correct, but if somebody doesn't, does it once, twice, three times, maybe they'll start to think about it. And on the books, it's 500 dollars for the first and 1,000 dollars for the second, people will start thinking about it and taking the permit. I mean, I think the other option is that if they just don't get permits in town anymore, they can't build during. But I don't know if we can stop that trait happening. It is, as the town administrator mentioned, it's a safety issue. The family that had that house issue, I said, here's your worst case scenario. The whole house burns down, and your family dies, who do they come after? Because she didn't have building permit. They come out of town. So it's, it affects everybody in this town, especially if you look at a neighborhood like where you live in Oak Park. And if there were a lot of, if there's work being done, bad electrical or bad plumbing work, and a major fire happened down there, you could take out multiple houses pretty quickly and eliminate them. So I think it's a huge matter of safety that we make sure that our citizens are safe, that we are protecting that from rogue contractors.
But it also puts us in the top fines in Rhode Island. Providence, the city of Providence, the biggest city in the state, has a $250 fine. And we're going to go double that.
Sure. Providence is sad, okay? Care of the immediate household in Portsmouth versus the immediate household in Providence. And tell me when moving it forward. I just said it's, it's not against the homeowners, it's against builders who are trying to get around and save that couple thousand dollars and not get the permit. And it's only putting the homeowner in a long run at jeopardy, and it needs to be penal. That's my opinion.
I think you have to start somewhere, and like Mr. Ray said, we all are arguing with the emails we get, arguing very consistent bases. We've done a lot of work, so we don't expect somewhere, meaning this spot. We're never going to get ahead of it. People are going to continue to build what they want to build without any permitting. And I get it, $500 could be a hardship on some of them.
It should be a hardship on the builder who didn't pull the permit.
But they're going to pass it up.
That's, that's a discussion to the homeowner and the non-tenant. If I was a homeowner and my builder did not fill the permit, I wouldn't be passing on anything else. Good point.
So do you want, do you have a motion?
My motion would be to create the $500 first offense fine and $1,000 second offense.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second. All in favor?
Ms. Jujuzza?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Ms. Brenner?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Motion passes five to one. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, town councillors. Thank you very much.
Okay, so I think that takes us to correspondence.
Motion to receive and place on file.
Seconded.
We have a motion and second. All in favor?
Ms. Jujuzza?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Motion to adjourn.
Jumping the gun, Key.
The meeting is, the next meeting is July 26th and August 10th and September 30th. Are there no other two questions?
I'll make one comment, and I forgot to bring it up there in the present technical summary, but I did send the arrogant meeting for the state and made some public comments, also typed them up, and I will, they were forwarded to the committee on Friday. I sent a copy to Senator Zetti, who were in the long, and also made comments the following meeting in Providence. So we are well represented in the quest to get East Main Road and Spray Street. At least those two projects titled the, or, quickly. So I will forward to council my comments and awesome pictures that I took of East Main Road and Spray Street.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ray.
We filed a letter, and we have the town.
Okay, thank you so much. Right, is there a motion to?
Seconded.
We have a motion to adjourn and a second. All in favor?
Ms. Jujuzza?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Ms. Brenner?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes six to nothing. Thank you so much, everyone.
Good night. It's time in person.